Thank you, I'd like to call this meeting of the Laramie City Council to order. Let the record reflect, it is Tuesday, April 19th, 2016, and the time is 6:30 PM. And, or excuse me, the time is actually about 6:32 PM. All right, first item is announcements, and I believe Counselor Shumway has an announcements, and then I'll go to staff.
Well, I would like to just say that we were informed this month that a former council member, Roger McKinley, who served from 2011 to 2014, and left us so that he could move to Kalispel, Montana, has passed away. And it's very sad. He was a gentleman, he was somebody that was very likable. I think everyone that is on the council has fond memories of him, and we are certainly saddened at his passing. The council has sent a card that our Vice Mayor has prepared that we're sending to his wife. And for those that knew Roger, we just want to let you know, and let you know that we were saddened that he has passed away.
Thank you, Counselor. Uh, City Staff, announcements?
Mayor, we have a number of announcements. I'll start with the Public Works Department. They have two announcements regarding Free Compost Day and Glass Recycling Opportunities.
Your Honor, the Mayor, members of council, it's been so long, I feel like I should introduce myself. We have a couple of announcements. On this evening's agenda, we have a resolution proclaiming May 1st through 7th, 2016 as International Compost Awareness Week. As part of that resolution, we're also offering two days where residents of Albany County can pick up free compost. Those days are May 14th and May 21st at the landfill. So bring a pickup truck, or a pail, or whatever you prefer, and come and pick up some free compost. It's excellent material, it's classified as, I believe, Class A or Grade A compost, so it's wonderful material. The other announce, excuse me, the other announcement is this Saturday, there's a Glass Recycling Event from 11:00 to 2:00 PM. It's in conjunction with the Earth Day Event at UW. The drop-off site is the Union Parking Lot, so this is an event that's spearheaded by the Wyoming Conservation Corps, and we've had a number of these pickup days over the last year or two. So we have another one scheduled this Saturday. Is it Friday? My apologies, it's the 22nd, I assumed it was Saturday.
Is it Friday?
It's Friday and the 22nd, sorry.
Thank you, Director Smith.
Parks and Recreation?
Honorable Mayor, City Council, Todd Fieser, Director of Parks and Recreation. That's, I'm still the new guy. I wanted to make the announcement that we're hosting the first Laramie Fun Factory on April 30th, from noon to four, at the Ison Event Center. At that time, for modest admission, people will be able to come in, roller skate, use the inflatables, and hopefully play archery tag. They did do a little mild rollout on this last weekend, and I was told that they had more attendance this last weekend than they had all of last season at the Ison Event Center. So we're expecting this to be a fun program, a lot of fun for families, hopefully heavy in the shoulder seasons, and look forward to seeing you guys come out and visit the program.
Thank you.
And we have an announcement from the Community Development Department as well regarding Cleanup Day this weekend, which is on Saturday.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, Members of Council, Randy Hunt, I'm the old guy. This Saturday, April 23rd, Community Cleanup Day, which actually is now known as Spring Cleanup Day, since we have an event in the fall as well. Many of the parameters are the same as you all and the public are well familiar with, but briefly, what we'll have is a beginning time of 7:30 AM, and the gathering place will be over here at the Annex, I believe on this side of the Annex. In addition to the work assignments, teams of volunteers going out and dealing with litter and so on, we'll have dumpster and solid waste truck locations. There are 10 of those all around town. I won't read the entire list unless you'd like me to, but they are scattered in various areas around town. The announcement with the specific locations is on the city's website, it's been in the media, I believe, and we're available for questions on that as well. Also, we want to mention the lunch that starts at 11 o'clock. It's in our parking lot here. I don't want to say lunch in the alley, that doesn't sound so great, but it's actually out here where we park our vehicles, we'll have all that cleared out. And a good reward and a valuable opportunity for the public who turn out on this important day. Reminder, bring work gloves and wear appropriate clothing, and if you have a group or know of a group that would like to sign up in advance, there is still time to do that. The sign-ups can either be done by calling our Code Enforcement Inspector, Brian Forster, or by calling Laramie Chamber Business Alliance. Both of those will be taking reservations and helping out with assignments.
Thank you. And for the information for the public, the councilors have, it's been really well attended by the councilors. The majority of us will be there, and I will be there also. So we look forward to seeing everybody on this coming Saturday.
Mayor, we have one final announcement, I'm sorry.
Oh, one more, okay.
And I'll note that if the public would like to read more, that was a lot of information quickly. The information presented here is also available on the city's website, main page, regarding cleanup and glass.
Thank you.
And well-cooked hamburgers and hot dogs. Well done. Well done, yeah, because the Health Inspector will be there, so gotta do it well.
That might be my job.
Honorable Mayor and Council, Dave Deragon, Assistant City Manager, you may remember me from your cable TV discussion. Tonight, I want to update you on a resolution on your consent agenda for purchasing surplus property from the state of Wyoming. This is generally a resolution we do annually to update the names. We're doing it a little different this year, and just putting the city manager's name on it, or designee that she will designate as purchases may come available. We've used Wyoming State Surplus as we can, but generally in their surplus program, things are pretty well-used, and so we don't often find things, but we do from time to time. But another aspect of what we do with the state, they also have a state bid program, and we do look at that on many of the items we purchase, or when it's applicable. But I should note that recently, we upgraded a copy machine, and through the state bid pricing, we were able to save about $200 a month on that particular lease. So we look at different avenues with the state, and use them appropriately to stretch our budget farther, and to leverage our monies when we can. And I'd be glad to answer any questions, if you have any.
Are there any questions from council? Thank you. Thank you. Okay, our next item is a public hearing. This public hearing is an application to support the redevelopment of the Empress Lot. City Clerk, I'll ask you to read the notice, please.
Notice of a Public Hearing, 2016 Business Ready Community Grant and Loan Program Application for a Business Committed Project. The Wyoming Business Council is seeking grant and loan applications from counties, incorporated cities, towns, joint power boards, and tribes for the 2016-2017 Business Ready Community BRC Grant and Loan Program. The Laramie Main Street Alliance, LMSA, is seeking a BRC Community Readiness Grant in the amount of $3 million to redevelop the Empress Lot located at 112 South Second Street. Laramie City Council will hold a public hearing on April 19, 2016, at 6:30 PM to gather public comments on this proposed application. The hearing will take place in the Council Chambers of City Hall, 406 Iverson Avenue.
Thank you. I'm assuming the majority of people in the audience are here for this public hearing, so hopefully you've appointed a spokesman. We'll be here a while, but, no, I'm just kidding. Who would like to speak first? The first one's the hardest. After that, everybody warms up.
We'll start picking here.
I hope you appointed a spokesman. There we go.
Don.
And also, please, if everyone would identify themselves for the record.
My name is Don McLeod. I'm a 20-year resident of Laramie, and I am here as the head of the Board for Big Hollow Food Co-op. We live on the edge of the downtown, and have, both places we've lived. And my wife, who's a pastry chef and runs the University Bakery, and I enjoy the downtown and have, compares, compare it favorably to other places in the state of Wyoming, in terms of its vibrancy, and things like the farmer's market and stuff. An important business to that, to the downtown, is Big Hollow Food Co-op, has turned in the last 10 years from really nothing to a pretty lucrative business that has, that is community-owned, community-operated, employs about 17 people, supports about 40-some vendors within the region to sell their goods and produce there. What's important about that is that we'd be the main tenant of this development project, and as such, we think that it's a good, it's a good project to move forward with, to partner with the city and LMSA. I think the important thing is that it's local, and it could serve, and I think it does serve, as an amenity to those who would consider to move to town as a unique retail opportunity for locally and healthy foods and products. And I'll leave it to others to add to that. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Hello, good evening. My name is Frances Freiberger, and we live on Corthell Road. We've lived here in Laramie for maybe four years about, and I'm just speaking as a resident of the city of Laramie and a customer of the Co-op. First of all, I want to thank you all for taking time to even listen, because I know you guys are very busy. But for us, the Co-op is a huge draw into downtown Laramie. My guess is that, of course, it's only me and my husband most of the time, but I think we spend probably 20% to 30% of our food dollars at the Co-op. And if the climate of Laramie were such that we had a year-round farmer's market, it might not be so vital to the community to have the Co-op. But the fact of the matter is that for probably nine months out of the year, maybe eight, it's just untenable to have a farmer's market. So at the Co-op, we think it's fabulous that they offer an opportunity for local growers to sell their foods, because, and then these growers can keep in business in the Laramie Valley. And I'm not sure that the growers would be able to produce enough year-round, for example, to sell their produce to, say, Safeway or Ridley's, because I don't think they can grow spinach and raise enough eggs, maybe for part of the year. So just to give you some idea, we buy Wag's meats, we buy eggs from Brands' Hens and other locally grown chickens, we buy Sheila Bird produce, and Tronstedt produce, and probably dozens of other things. So I would encourage you, if there's any way you can support having the Co-op be able to move into bigger premises, better premises, I think it's going to be good for business throughout Laramie. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Who would like to be next?
Hi, my name is Lindstein, and if I talk too fast, please tell me, because I don't know this. And I've, in a way, I think maybe I shouldn't be here, because I think, I've been here since last August 1st, and I think maybe I should be here five years or something, before I comment. But it's not, but I tend to go to the city council, etc. meetings, so, okay, and since I'm, and I love Laramie, since I've been here, but I have, since I've not been here that much, and I don't know everything, I have more questions than answers, and you have to know the traces of the place I used to live might be reflecting in my, some of my fears about growing too fast and stuff. But anyway, first of all, I've been a member of the Co-op since about a month after I moved here, and that's probably one of the reasons I chose Laramie as opposed to another place in Wyoming. And I'm really happy to be here, I go several times a week, and I would welcome more space, especially more bulk, and I know standing in, like, outdoor seating, which would be really great. And the one question I have is, which I'm hoping there's an answer to, is, is that, how does, I read that and heard that, the reason that they have flat sales is because of lack of space, but if it isn't, it could be, I mean, a problem, like, how do they know there's lack of space? You know, and I'm saying, I really hope that there's a good answer, because I really want them to expand. But I always have questions. And the other thing is, today, I spent a lot of the, in the library, reference libraries are the greatest, I know about it today, when I ask somebody, I found a Laramie Housing Study 2030 that was made in January 2015, and there was a lot to digest, I won't go into it now, but one basic premise which I'm wondering about is, one sentence in there, when I'm quoting, a partial sentence, "Future population and household growth in Laramie will be driven by new and expanded housing, among other things," and that was, so quoted a partial sentence. And the people I've talked to, which is not a lot, and it's on Scientifics Limited, is that, a lot of people don't want Laramie to become too bigger, and I'm kind of the same way, I was, like, close the door behind me, you know, I mean, which is not, you know, and just, you know, I moved in August from San Francisco, so. And anyway, so, you know, so my question is, are the projections I saw for increased, you know, housing projections for increased need, because of increased people, you know, is that, is that because of natural need, or is that because of people, somebody in planning wants more people here, and is that what Laramie actually wants? And I don't know the answer. Again, I don't even feel like, I haven't been here long enough to even be up here, but I am anyway. And, you know, it seems, you know, anyway, it seems like also, which people are they trying to get, it's like, seems like a bigger food co-op, which I would like, and high-end single apartments, which sounds like it's going to be, maybe I'm wrong, it seems like they're trying to attract young professionals, which I keep talking about on Document, and I like the mix in Laramie, where it's the university and, you know, and other people, and it's just like, I like the mix. So it's, myself, it's just anything again, but I was just wondering, what do people in Laramie want, is that where the downtown plan is headed? And no conclusions, just my newbie questions, and, yeah, I mean, because I'm never wanting another, I agree with everybody, so I'm studying Laramie, but thank you.
Thank you.
Honorable Mayor and City Council, my name is Alyssa Wexler, and I am the Secretary of the Board of Directors for the Food Co-op. I was born and raised in Laramie, so I've been here for a long time, on and off, and in the past, when I've gone to other places to look, to consider moving somewhere new, one of the first things I look for is a good functioning food co-op. And so I'm really glad that we have that in Laramie, but we have reached our capacity, really. I think last week, you saw some charts about our growth over the past 10 years, and how we were growing substantially every year, and over the last two years, we've really plateaued out. And so, to address the last speaker's concerns, there are a couple things that we've, a couple reasons we see this as a real need. One is that we see the capacity for growth if we have more space. I hope that most of you have been in the Co-op, but we are using every single square inch of space in there. We've also found a real need for improving the quality of the workspace, the work environment for the employees who are currently there. They currently don't have a break room. There are a number of other things that would be really helpful if we had more space, both for being able to have more products on the shelves, and also just a better work environment for the people who are, who are working there, additionally hoping to get more people working there, if we are able to have more, more items on the shelves and a higher profit coming in. So the last thing I wanted to say in terms of our need for, for moving into this larger space is that we, I believe last year, maybe two years ago, did a survey of, with, for our members, to see what they wanted, where they, you know, if they wanted expansion, if they wanted us to move, what their preference was, and they said that they wanted us to stay downtown, and that they wanted us to grow. And so, right now, we've been looking at ways that we can grow in our current location, and it's not very feasible. We've been trying, we've been exploring options, and then this came to us in just kind of meeting everything we could possibly want. So I'm strongly in favor of this, and I hope that you all support it as well. So thank you very much.
Thank you.
My name is Mike, I'm a grad student, and I work for Main Street. And I think some of what is missing in what's being presented to you is, we've heard that the Co-op needs to expand, and that's a compelling argument. So what I want to lay out for you is why this needs to be a grant, and why you need to support it. Essentially, the problem with the Empress that we run into is a blight fixing problem. It's a chain-link fence full of beer bottles and abandoned trash. In terms of fixing that, what happened there is that the city, in removing the Empress at taxpayer expense of over $1 million, did, did it as cheaply as possible, and I don't fault you guys for that, but what happened is that when they removed the building, they abated the asbestos, and they left the foundation in place of the Empress. And what they did, they actually took saws and cut 18 inches below the surface, and those foundations are actually supporting the adjacent buildings. So the problem you run into is, should you want to do anything with the Empress, any use, parking lot, like Mr. Glass suggests, building, like we suggest, whatever it is you want to do, you're looking at essentially a pit, that's, it's basically a bathtub that's supporting the adjacent buildings. And so what happens, the way you get around this, is you have to engineer around it. You can't go in there with hacksaws and just remove that foundation, because sure enough, the cowboy will come down, Jeffries will come down right on top of the workers. And so to fix that, to get around it, what has to happen is essentially, think of going to the ocean, when you go and look at the ocean, right? And you go out on a pier, we've all done this before, right? What they do is they sink pilings into the ocean and build a deck on top. And so what, what has to happen on the Empress is that. And currently, I just got final certified cost estimates for the rebuild today. We have over $1 million budgeted just for that site prep. And so the problem you run into is, let's say, we want the Co-op to pay for this, or whomever else to pay for all of this. Whoever it is that's going in there is going to have to sink, our current estimates are over $1 million, to have a site that they can use. And so Mr. Glass's idea of, you know, a parking lot, right? So I don't think he is in a position to go in and sink $1 million to put pilings into the ground to pave a parking lot. And so at the end of the day, it's not clear that private money is going to fix this blight problem for us, that the way this is fixed is through public support, and serious public support. A lot of state money goes in to fix this stuff. We also have some environmental stuff we have to deal with, there's a plume under there, and there's some costs associated with that, that preclude, or doesn't preclude, but it makes it very unattractive to private development. And so I think at the end of the day, one thing that I would like to kind of have out there in the, in the public awareness, or in your awareness, as you guys go in to vote on this, is that we really do need this, if you want to fix that site. If you want to do something about it, and get that chain-link fence down, there's going to have to be public support. And so I'd ask you to keep that in mind as you go in to vote, that it's probably unfeasible any other way.
Thank you. And what was your last name?
McCammon.
Thank you.
It's pretty depressing.
There we go.
My name's Lindsay Olson. I'm co-owner of Planet Laramie Farms, and so I just wanted to speak on behalf of some of producers that are vending through the Co-op, and I wanted to say that it's kind of scary to start a small business, especially in agriculture, and it's really rewarding to have the Co-op available to bring in a little bit of vegetables here, a little bit of produce there. We sell gourmet mushrooms, and I'm not sure where that would fall if we didn't have a place to vend. So the Co-op has been a little bit of a business incubator for us, it's allowed us to take some risks, knowing that they will work with our limited surplus, it's not really a surplus, our limited amounts that we have to offer to the community. So, thank you.
Thank you. Okay, who would like to be next? There we go. Thank you.
Good evening. My name is Lori Kirk, and I am here with three different hats. I am on the Main Street Board, I own Cowgirl Yarn, and I also own the building that I am in, so my backyard is this lovely Empress Lot. So on a weekly basis, I can go out and see the collection of bottles and all the excitement that happens back there, because that's my backyard. And I am just very, very excited for this building, the potential of this to be going up, and I hope for your support. So, thank you.
Thank you for coming tonight. Now we're rolling, one right after the other. We're warmed up.
Good evening. My name's Jeff Smith, I'm the Vice Chair on the Board of Directors for Big Hollow. And I guess what I'd like to tie into is, kind of leave off where Michael left, and so there is a hole downtown, and I love downtown. I've started two businesses here in Laramie, and the downtown community is very supportive of new ventures, the Co-op being one of those. This hole that we have downtown, we would like to see something in that space. And Michael's right, the private industry, I'm in the private industry, we don't tackle these kind of things, it doesn't cash flow for us. The benefit of this is, there is state money available, this state money's going to go somewhere. If it doesn't go to Laramie, if we don't vote for this, it's going to go to another town. They are going to spend this money. It seems to me like a longtime resident of Laramie, that I would like for this money to be spent in Laramie, Laramie Jobs, Laramie Development. There are, there is a lot of support, and a lot of, and a lot of horsepower, is what I like to call it, to get the building up, and I think that that's important, and I think that that's where you guys step in. What I'd like to say from Big Hollow's perspective is that we're not looking for anything free here, we're looking to pay market rate for rent downtown in a larger space, 5,000 square feet. And so what we're coming to the plate, saying, is that, once this building is up, we're going to help with cash flow. The state wants part of that money paid back. I don't exactly know what that portion is, but I know they want a lot of it paid back. And so to go forward with a project like this, you have to be comfortable knowing that the main tenant, the foundation tenant of this lot, is going to be able to do that. And I believe Marla and the Big Hollow staff over the years has proven in Laramie that we are capable and comfortable taking this space on, assuring you that we are going to be there for the long term, and assuring you that we are going to follow through and pay the money back to make sure this is a successful project from the beginning until the end. Thank you.
Thank you.
My name is Burk, I've lived in this town for 40 years. I used to work for Vince at the Granery, back in the 80s. I can tell you that the people that come downtown to shop for food really like the Co-op. It's nice, it's a gathering place, it's a community-building place. I don't know if any of you have been here long enough to remember the Iverson Street Fair that Vince put on, all the people that he hired, the sense of community that came out of all the businesses that worked together downtown, he supplied food to the deli, and so on. The same with these guys. I just want to say that when you support Big Hollow, and their 17 positions, and whatever positions they can add, you're also supporting all the small businesses that provide them with the produce, and the cheese, and the eggs, and the meat. So it's a much larger picture than just Big Hollow. I hope that you choose to support it. I would really like to see that hole in the ground turn into something. And so, that additional piece, right, to help everybody sort of be able to get fundraising for their whatever project, or research, or sort of effort that they have going on, is greatly appreciated. And so, I think this addition to downtown would be amazing, and I think it would serve as a really strong anchor for keeping our downtown super vibrant and making it even more so. Thank you.
Thank you. Okay, anyone else like to speak? Last chance. All right, then we'll close this public hearing, and we'll move on to the next item. Would you join me for the pledge of allegiance?
I pledge allegiance to the symbol of flag of the United States of America, and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Okay. Kirk, would you do roll call, please?
Hanson.
Here.
Henry.
Here.
Shumway.
Here.
Schuster.
Here.
Somerville.
Here.
Vitale.
Here.
Weaver.
Here.
Pierce.
Here.
Polikas.
Here.
That is nine present, zero absent, Your Honor.
Thank you. Are there any disclosures by council members on the items concerning conflicts of interest on the items we'll be discussing tonight? Okay, seeing none, I'll move on. Item number six, I'll turn it over to the vice mayor.
There are no changes to the agenda this evening, so I move that the agenda be set as submitted.
Second. Second by Counselor Shumway. All in favor of the motion signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? That motion carries. Vice mayor?
I move that the consent agenda be approved, and that each specific action on the consent agenda be approved as indicated. Second.
Thank you. There's a motion and a second by Counselor Somerville. That's a roll call. City clerk, would you do roll call, please?
Somerville.
Yes.
Vitale.
Yes.
Weaver.
Yes.
Hanson.
Yes.
Shumway.
Yes.
Schuster.
Yes.
Pierce.
Yes.
Polikas.
Yes.
That's nine yeses and zero nos, Your Honor.
Thank you. Okay, we're moving on to the regular agenda. Item number nine, or excuse me, item number ten, Counselor Schuster.
Thank you. I move to approve original ordinance number 1941 on second reading, in accordance with the finding of facts, conclusions of law, and noting that a public hearing was held on April 5, 2016.
Second.
Thank you. There's a motion and a second by Counselor Henry. Director Hunt.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, members of council. This item is before you on second reading. The item was, I think, fairly well-vetted last time we met, or last time you had it before you. Briefly, this item will amend the UDC, Unified Development Code, by allowing a value of zero to be assessed to our paper streets and alleys. Those are the ones that never were built back in the good old days, when they planted a good bit of the older part of town, have not been built now, and are not identified as being needed on any adopted plan or approved plat in the future. That would allow those, upon each one being petitioned, to be vacated, that is, turned into private property by vote of the council, and conveyed to the, generally, the adjacent property owners on either side of the vacated right-of-way. There are a good many of these around town, and they've been lingering on as sort of ghostly remnants of days gone by, and frankly, have not ever been needed, or very likely would have been built, or at least identified as a need by now. So, second reading, this comes to you with a favorable recommendation for planning commission, and also from staff, and be glad to answer any questions.
Questions for council? Yes, Counselor Hanson?
Just one question, thank you. On item number four, which is the new one, valuation of existing property, you settled on a thirty-year period preceding which nothing should have happened on this land. Why did you settle on thirty years? I thought most of these things are a hundred years old, or something like that.
Mr. Mayor, Counselor Hanson, it's true, most of them are, or a good many of them are, older than thirty years, some of them go back to a hundred twenty-plus years. Thirty years is a number that we pick based on construction records and maintenance records. It's sort of a round number. I think the actual number is in the thirty-two to thirty-five, somewhere in their range, depending on what part of town we're talking about. We may have records in some places even older. But thirty was the minimum number at which we were pretty certain, in fact, very certain that we had records and could identify. It's probably very rare, but there may be a few lingering. I can't even think of any examples, but it's possible that we may have some that are out there that were maintained once upon a time, and then allowed to fall off the, fall off the maintenance schedule. This will give us the ability to do a quick check if someone comes in, requests vacation, determine that, though it's never been done, never, never needed in the past, still not needed today. So, it was a record-keeping number.
Thank you, Your Honor. Thank you. Other questions? Any comments from council? Anyone from the public wish to comment? City clerk, would you do roll call, please?
Schuster.
Yes.
Shumway.
Yes.
Henry.
Yes.
Hanson.
Yes.
Somerville.
Yes.
Vitale.
Yes.
Weaver.
Yes.
Hanson.
Yes.
Henry.
Yes.
Shumway.
Yes.
Pierce.
Yes.
Polikas.
Yes.
That's nine yeses and zero nos, Your Honor.
All right, that, that item carries. That was second reading, so it'll move on to third reading. Item number eleven, Counselor Schuster.
More of kind of the same. I move to approve original ordinance number 1942 on second reading, in accordance with the finding of facts and conclusions of law, and note a public hearing was held on April 5, 2016.
Second.
Thank you. There's a motion and a second by Counselor Vitale. Once again, Director Hunt.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, members of council. This is also a UDC amendment. This one is perhaps even simpler in concept than the previous one. We are inserting hotels and motels as a permitted use in the C2 Commercial District. I believe that has to be an accidental omission of some sort, not sure of the history, but it puts the list of uses where it should be by including those. And then, the remainder of the ordinance would fix typos and bring some organizational things, move things from one chapter to another, essentially to group all our use categories and restrictions together. Pretty simple. That's it. In a nutshell, be glad to answer any questions.
Do we have any questions? Counselor Hanson?
Thank you. Just an observation, Your Honor. It took me a while to realize you kind of melded two things together here, and the second one, namely the light industrial, I hope the public is aware of it. It's in there that we are changing some designation there, too. And it kind of fell off the wagon because of the first one, and nobody has mentioned it. It's in there as a change here, okay?
Thank you, Counselor. That is quite true. We, maybe even in a more obvious fix, we put industrial as a use back in the industrial zoning district.
Sure. But it wasn't mentioned anywhere, you know what I mean?
It does deserve to be mentioned in that little fix.
The public should be aware of it. Thank you. Thank you, Your Honor.
Anything else from council? Would anyone from the audience wish to speak? City clerk, would you do roll call, please?
Vitale.
Yes.
Weaver.
Yes.
Somerville.
Yes.
Schuster.
Yes.
Hanson.
Yes.
Henry.
Yes.
Shumway.
Yes.
Pierce.
Yes.
Polikas.
Yes.
That's nine yeses and zero nos, Your Honor.
All right, that, that item carries. That was second reading, so it'll move on to third reading. Item number eleven, Counselor Schuster.
More of kind of the same. I move to approve original ordinance number 1942 on second reading, in accordance with the finding of facts and conclusions of law, and note a public hearing was held on April 5, 2016.
Second.
Thank you. There's a motion and a second by Counselor Vitale. Once again, Director Hunt.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, members of council. This is also a UDC amendment. This one is perhaps even simpler in concept than the previous one. We are inserting hotels and motels as a permitted use in the C2 Commercial District. I believe that has to be an accidental omission of some sort, not sure of the history, but it puts the list of uses where it should be by including those. And then, the remainder of the ordinance would fix typos and bring some organizational things, move things from one chapter to another, essentially to group all our use categories and restrictions together. Pretty simple. That's it. In a nutshell, be glad to answer any questions.
Do we have any questions? Counselor Hanson?
Thank you. Just an observation, Your Honor. It took me a while to realize you kind of melded two things together here, and the second one, namely the light industrial, I hope the public is aware of it. It's in there that we are changing some designation there, too. And it kind of fell off the wagon because of the first one, and nobody has mentioned it. It's in there as a change here, okay?
Thank you, Counselor. That is quite true. We, maybe even in a more obvious fix, we put industrial as a use back in the industrial zoning district.
Sure. But it wasn't mentioned anywhere, you know what I mean?
It does deserve to be mentioned in that little fix.
The public should be aware of it. Thank you. Thank you, Your Honor.
Anything else from council? Would anyone from the audience wish to speak? City clerk, would you do roll call, please?
Vitale.
Yes.
Weaver.
Yes.
Somerville.
Yes.
Schuster.
Yes.
Hanson.
Yes.
Henry.
Yes.
Shumway.
Yes.
Pierce.
Yes.
Polikas.
Yes.
That's nine yeses and zero nos, Your Honor.
That motion carries. And that, also a second reading, it'll move on to third reading. Item number twelve, Counselor Henry.
Yes. I move to approve resolution number 2016-35, approving a project agreement with the Wyoming Water Development Commission, funding the design of the Laramie Northside Tank Project, and authorize the mayor and city clerk to sign said resolution and project agreement.
Second.
Thank you. A motion and a second by the vice mayor. Director Smith.
Your Honor, the mayor, members of council, the Laramie Northside Tank Project's been in the works for a number of years, even predating my time here on staff. And over the last two years, for sure, we've worked diligently in trying to reach the point where we could actually pursue design and construction of that project. And you may recall that the water master plan that was recently completed was a prerequisite of this project. In other words, the Wyoming Water Development Commission required that we had a Level One master plan in place prior to pursuing this Level Three funding for this project. Conceptually, the Northside Tank Project actually includes two tanks, one to the northeast of town, and the other north of town along US 287. The first tank would be in Pressure Zone Three, and the other one in Pressure Zone One. Both of these tanks are intended to meet deficiencies, incorrect deficiencies within the existing system, as well as provide for future growth. Also included in the project is roughly 20,000 lineal feet of pipe of various sizes and other appurtenances, such as pressure-reducing valves. So, you may recall that council, back on September 3, 2013, approved an application for funding with the Wyoming Water Development Commission to design and construct the Northside Tank. Funding in the amount of $1.2 million was approved by Water Development Commission. That funding has been held in abeyance pending the outcome of the water master plan. Now that the master plan is in place, we have funding in the form of a 67% grant, or $804,000, and a 33% loan for the project. The attached project agreement resolution approved the participation in the project, accept the financing package, and approve the debt to be incurred, along with approving the repair and maintenance account. So, there's a number of conditions tied to the money, as you might expect, as outlined by the Water Development Commission. These are very similar conditions and requirements that the city has accepted in previous funding projects. I have a couple of things of note. In the last paragraph in the background section, that says $1.2 million. That should be a $12 million project. The ultimate estimate for construction and design is $12 million. So, this design is 10% of that, the $1.2 million, and there, the project is also eligible for another $10.8 million in construction funding. Once design is, has proceeded, progressed to the point of roughly 50%, we can then apply to the Water Development Commission for construction funding. Their next cycle is this fall, so we have tasked the designer to complete the project sufficiently such that we can apply for construction funding this fall. So, we're on a tight timeline trying to get this done. So, I just wanted to point that out, that, real tight call. And I didn't mention it in, in the staff report or in the resolution there. There's a, there's some attendant documents to this funding agreement that weren't included in the packet, and I, I wasn't able to do that because I just received them yesterday. So, I apologize for that. But all told, it's a pretty exciting project, a good funding package. The term of the loan is thirty years at 4%, so pretty standard funding agreement. With that, I'd be glad to answer any questions.
Counselor Hanson?
Thank you, Your Honor. I didn't understand the budget before. Now, I understand it even less. But let me make it clear for myself, and maybe you need to help me. The, what we are approving tonight is $1.2 million for the design. Am I understanding that correctly?
Yes, you are. That is absolutely correct.
Okay, the whole project is 12 million, 10%, $1.2 million is for design. If you go to the budget, and if you look at the budget, the first part I get, revenue I get, 804 and 396 makes up $1.2 million for the design of the project, make up of loan and grants. But if you go to the expense, there is project cost 415, 801, then loans on the project, grants on the project, listed as above, and then it says contingency zero, and then at the bottom it says total amount is 415. They're not making any sense whatsoever.
Your Honor, the mayor, members of council, what I was trying to do there is demonstrate to you that the next agenda item, which is a professional services agreement, to do the actual design, is in the $400,000 range, so it's well below the $1.2 million budget. There's sufficient funding to fund the design of the project. It's not directly related to this staff report, but it does give you an indication of what the actual cost will be.
So, we're not spending $1.2 million on design, but we're only spending $415,000 on design? Is that correct?
That's correct.
So, that money can be rolled over into the actual construction?
That's correct, yes.
Okay. Phew, thank you. That made no sense to me whatsoever. I didn't understand it. Thank you.
Counselor Vitale?
Just two quick observations. I'd like to ask the city manager, what is the total payout of the $396,000 loan at 4% for thirty years?
I'm not, mayor and council, I'm not sure I understand your question, Counselor Vitale. Are you asking for the annual payment?
No, not the annual payment. After thirty years, how much will we have paid back on that $396,000?
So, you're looking for amortization schedule? I don't have that in front of me, and I don't believe it's in the packet.
No, and Water Development did not provide that to us. So they want to make sure that if they fund a grant and a loan, and these facilities are built, that we are budgeting the operating and maintenance expenses to take care of it. They don't want us to basically turn it on and forget it, and not be able to reach its useful life.
The reason I ask, and so often, many organizations, groups, whatever, they can figure out what it costs to build something, which ends up being the cheapest part of the project. But they don't figure what it's going to maintain, you know, what the annual maintenance cost is, as well as what the expected life and what would be the replacement cost down the road. You generally don't see those figures in. And if thing is going to be built here, and I'm sure in the next two or three years, I guess I read we're going to have about a $2.2 million shortfall this year, which I'm sure we'll be discussing sometime. But if you don't have these maintenance figures in this budget, and we look at this budget, make our adjustments, then all of a sudden halfway through the budget, we get a request for amendment to the budget to add that maintenance cost, which could be substantial. We don't have the money, that could be. So it'd be kind of nice to have that upfront to figure in, you know, the budget in its initial stage.
Thank you.
City manager.
City manager.
Mayor and council member Vitale, quick amortization schedule shows if we pay it off over 30 years, $396,000, the total cost would be about $680,000 with interest. I can share with you, we rarely make our payments over the full life of the loans that we have with the state. And then quickly, to the point of the budget shortfall, remember the water tank, this project, is within your enterprise funds, within your utility fund for water and wastewater. There is no budget shortfall in that fund because it is managed locally by this council, who set rates adequate to support the total operation of the water and the wastewater system. So the $2.2 million shortfall you mentioned is only in our governmental activities, not in our business activities.
Well, it still has to be figured if we're going to look at after raise rates or not raise rates to cover additional costs for new projects.
Counselor Vitale, you are correct. As you know, the water and your wastewater funds, we have accounted for this project in the long-term capital plan and built it into the rate projections. And of course, as Director Smith has said, we're pursuing loans and grants. We have strong support from the Water Development Commission for this particular project, largely because it's important to the long-term future sustainability and also growth of our water system to accommodate a growing community, specifically on the north side of the town. But I can assure you, we have taken this into account in terms of our long-term capital plan, and also built up rates that are sufficient to make the debt service. And you're right, Counselor Vitale, long-term maintenance on any infrastructure of this sort is important, and we take that into account as well. And invite the director to add anything if he'd like to do so as far as long-term maintenance and operation costs for this item.
Just one quick one, if I may, last question.
You may.
The initial request now for the $1.2 million is basically just for the preliminary design and cost estimates. But the whole project possibly could be funded up to $12 million. And so there'll be another application for the project itself, for the installation and all of that.
Your Honor, the mayor and council member Vitale, yes, that is correct.
It's a planning grant.
So we would come back before this council with an application to the Water Development Commission for the construction funding, and that would be late this summer or early fall.
Okay, very good, thank you.
You're welcome, thank you.
Thank you. And Director Smith, could you expound a little bit on the, a little bit was said by our city manager, the significance of this project, why we're doing it? Does it help our system today? Is it more for future growth, if you would?
Your Honor, the mayor, members of council. This project, as I said earlier, meets or addresses deficiencies in our existing system. There's parts of the community in North Laramie that have very low pressure, very low flow. So a lot of the fire hydrants don't flow at necessary rates. The Sira Sky Project is a new one that basically maxed out our ability to provide water service in what we call Zone 3. So as I mentioned, there's a Zone 1 and a Zone 3 tank. Those are designed to meet current and future demands. So right now, Zone 3 has no water storage. So the tanks that you see around town are either in Zone 1 or Zone 4, for example. None of them are in Zone 3. So as we work through the water master plan, this came out to be the number-one priority of all of the projects that were identified. So to meet existing deficiencies and future growth, so both of those.
Thank you, appreciate that. Counselor Hanson.
Thank you, I have one more question, Your Honor. And that is, we need to put water in this tank. Where is it going to come from primarily?
Your Honor, the mayor and council member Hanson. This will be tied right into our existing system. So primarily, the Zone 1 water will come from the water treatment plant out at Harmony. So I mentioned that there's 20,000 lineal feet of pipe included within this project. A significant portion of this project is intended to improve the transmission capacity of our system from the southwest part of the community around to the north. So that water will come from the water treatment plant. The other will come from one of our well systems, and more specifically, the spur wells up north of the landfill. So those are the two primary sources. We co-mingle all of our water together. But that's where the primary two sources for these tanks will come from.
Any other comments from council? Would anyone from the public wish to address this subject? City Clerk, would you do roll call, please?
Henry.
Yes.
Hanson.
Yes.
Shumway.
Yes.
Schuster.
Yes.
Somerville.
Yes.
Vitale.
Yes.
Weaver.
Yes.
Pierce.
Yes.
Polikas.
Yes.
That is nine yeses and zero nos, Your Honor.
Thank you, that motion carries. Item number 13, Counselor Henry.
Yes, I move to award the professional services agreement for the design of the Laramie-Northside Tank Project to Dowell of Laramie, Wyoming, in the total amount of $377,801, plus a contingency of $37,781, for a total amount not to exceed $415,581, and authorize the mayor and clerk to sign.
Second. Thank you, there's a motion and a second by the Vice Mayor. Are there any further questions for Director Smith? Is there anything to add to this, Director Smith?
Your Honor, the mayor, members of council. This is the professional services agreement associated with the previous item. So we went through the request for qualification process, received six qualification statements, also interviewed four of the consultants, four out of the six, and selected Dowell as the top firm. So it's pretty much our standard selection process. A couple of nuances with that, we did the interviews, and we also had Brian Clarkin from Water Development participate in that selection process. So other than that, it's pretty straightforward. And Dowell is a local firm, they reside, their office is just up the street.
Questions, comments from council? Counselor Hanson.
Just an observation, Your Honor. I should have read the agenda forward and backward because that's where I would have found the $415,581. But by that time, I had forgotten where it came from.
I'll try to be more clear next time.
Thank you.
Anyone else? Also, Vitale.
Yeah, I have just a few comments. And looking at our, and I guess I need some clarification. But when you look at the state statute relative to the bidding process, Wyoming State Statute 151113, and it says, "Required to bid to purchase of any new vehicle and purchases or public improvements in excess of $35,000." So, and there's some other language to that. And again, it states here on page 4 of 14 of our purchasing policy, "When obtaining quotes for public improvements, considerations must include a 10% contingency to ensure the cost does not exceed $35,000. Additionally, if the majority of quotes received exceed $35,000, it is recommended that public improvement moves to a formal bid process." Then there's some other language with that. And we're doing a request for proposal, and yet we, out of the six people, the amounts that each of them submitted is not published. So we don't know compared to what Dowell bid, how that is in relationship, if they were the lowest ones or if they were selected because they were the best person, I guess, qualified to do the job, which sometimes raises some red flags. But I'd like to know what the other people here, what their bids were, and what made Dowell the firm that was selected that was not the lowest bidder on that situation? Because there are some other things in this purchasing policy when you look in the state statute that it just, time after time, it just seems that looks like the request for proposals are not inappropriate, but it's a shortcut to get somebody that you'd like to get. And that's because you don't have to take the lowest bidder when you have a request for proposal. But when a policy's set, if it's over $35,000, the statute says that, and it should be a formal bid. I guess, who makes that determination? And who gets the reprieve from going from what the bidding policy is by statute to doing what we do?
Director Smith.
Your Honor, the mayor, members of council. I'd like to point out that those are two different processes. So a bid for equipment and construction is indeed by low competitive bid. So that's a different process than when you solicit professional services for engineering design, and you may solicit professional services for many other things that the city were to pursue. When you're soliciting professional services, you base those on qualifications. And our purchasing requirements, and that of the state, is that you actually base your decision on qualifications. Fees can be considered at some point in the process. But in general, the decision is based on qualifications. So in this example, when we issued the request for qualifications, we include the criteria for which we're going to rate those proposals. And each firm designs their proposal or statement of qualifications based on those criteria. So in this case, qualifications and experience of the key personnel, so the people that are going to work on the project are very, that's critical to us, and we want to see their qualifications and experience. References of the firm and project team, we want to make sure that the team that's designing this project, and it's a significant project for the city of Laramie, it's a very complex hydraulic component that will be added to a rather complex water system. So we want to make sure that that firm that we select has the qualifications and ability and experience to design these components on our behalf. Project scope and scope alternatives is considered. So what are you going to do for us for the fee that you ultimately proposed to? So what are we going to get for our dollar, for example? And schedule, in this case, it's very critical that we meet the fall application deadline with the Water Development Commission. So if a consultant were to come in here and say, "Well, we'll have the project designed by next January," well, that's not going to work for us because we're well past the deadline. So those are the criteria that we look at when analyzing the professional services. Those are very similar on this project as they are for others. So, and I think at some point in the past during one of these discussions, I think council member Shumway made reference to a brain surgeon, and you're not going to go after the low bid. If you need brain surgery, you're going to seek out the most qualified surgeon. So this is standard process, this is exactly how we do other professional services. We did not vary from that schedule process at all.
Thank you. Counselor Vitale.
Yeah, just to follow up on, you gave us all these qualifications and so forth. And I guess I'm reading from the policy that follows the state statute. It says, "New vehicles and goods, acquisitions, projects, public improvements," which this is going to be, "in excess of $35,000." Authority to award is the city council. Council budget authorization required, yes. Formal bid required, yes. And then it goes on and on. And then it also, on page 4 of 14, and 5 of 14, it gives you a list and definitions of each of the categories that should be in the bidding process. Now, if the request for proposals is an acceptable form and supersedes what's in this bidding process, then I would like to be corrected. And if it's in here and I haven't seen it, I would also like to be corrected on that. So other than that, all I have is what we're supposed to be going by.
Thank you. City Attorney.
Mayor, council, the project we're talking about here is for professional services, which is distinguished from the, what you're reading there, Counselor Vitale, which is for construction or bidding on vehicles, things like that.
Yeah, well, playing on words of professional.
Counselor Vitale.
Well, if I may address it.
Well, let me make sure there's no one else from council that has any comments, and then I'll come back to you, okay? Is there any other further comments? Counselor Vitale.
In your definition there, I would seem to think engineering services would fall under that definition, wouldn't it? Professional services, aren't engineers professionals? I mean, it's brain surgeon or heart surgeon, I don't know.
Let me go back to our city attorney.
Yeah. Depends on how the context, I guess. And in that context, engineering is included in all construction projects. So, I mean, there can, engineer would be a part of the construction contract. You can also contract with an engineer as a professional services, which would be something different.
Thank you.
I think it's a play on words, but.
Counselor Vitale.
That's, no, I've said mine.
Yes, you have. Anyone else?
Thank you, I'm glad you recognized it.
Anyone from the public wish to comment on this? City Clerk, would you do roll call, please?
Henry.
Yes.
Hanson.
Yes.
Shumway.
Yes.
Schuster.
Yes.
Somerville.
Yes.
Vitale.
No.
Yes.
Pierce.
Yes.
Polikas.
Yes.
That is eight yeses and one no, Your Honor.
Thank you, that motion carries. On to our next item, which is item number 14, Counselor Schuster.
Yes, I move to approve the Mountain West, the state subdivision, final plot in accordance with findings of facts and conclusion of law, and authorize the mayor and clerk to sign the plot. the plat.
Second.
Thank you. It's a motion and a second by Counselor Weaver. Director.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, and members of council. This is the final plat for the Mountain West subdivision. It is a final plat that conforms to the conditions of the preliminary plat, which you all approved in January. As a reminder, as we often do with our final plats, I'd point out that if a final plat meets the conditions imposed by the governing bodies in the preliminary plat stage, and if it meets the test of state statutes and local ordinance, RUDC for the city, for example, then approval is obligatory on the council's part. This plat does meet those conditions. There were four that, four conditions that the council approved when this preliminary plat came before you in January, and those are reflected along with some additional matters in the final plat conditions as stated on the plat. There are eight of those total. Some of those are there more or less as standard items. For example, condition, if you have your plat, you can find these in the lower, I guess it's almost the lower right-hand corner of the plat sheet, just below the drawing itself. For example, condition eight identifies that mineral rights are done separately in Wyoming from surface rights. That's a common note. You've seen that before on especially large lot plats like this one. The ones, though, that I think are of most note to us would be the ones that correspond to the conditions council imposed or required of the subdivision at the preliminary plat stage in January. One of those is that a maximum of one access, one driveway access per lot to Sherman Hill Road and Happy Jack Trail would be allowed. A parallel condition is that no access be allowed to US 30, Grand Avenue. I guess it's a little ambiguous where Grand Avenue starts and the interstate ends, vice versa, but all of it is US 30, so the interstate is US 30 as well as Grand into town, so we're covered on that one. There is a note that addresses the fact that Sherman Hill Road Improvement and Service District is the operating maintaining entity. Our understanding from the correspondence with Sherman Hill Road Improvement District is that they have the district president at least, Mr. Jensen, whose letter was the one that we identified in pre-council as having been provided to you, I apologize, it didn't get to you earlier. But that letter from Mr. Jensen through Coffee Engineering identifies that the Road Improvement District has approved the access arrangements and the maintenance arrangements for those. You have a copy of that letter. The primary thing that was of great note during the preliminary plat stage was disposition of wastewater. The plat before you tonight does conform to the preliminary plat conditions, which specifies that enhanced wastewater systems will be installed in the subdivision. We had a question from a member of the public not long ago about whether that applies to replacement septic systems. It's our judgment based on the wording of the plat, and I'll defer to the attorney if he has additional thought, but as long as this subdivision is the recorded plat for those eight lots, then future wastewater systems, individual wastewater system, septic tanks, would be required to follow that rule, too. They would have to be enhanced systems at the time of replacement, if and when that comes. The state engineer's office would be authorized and tasked per the condition, as well as by county subdivision regulations with approving those. So, that would be part of the construction process following approval of the plat, should you choose to do that. The, as a reminder, the site-specific investigation and the peer review specifically for the site-specific investigation identified enhanced wastewater systems, enhanced septic tanks as the mechanism for private waste disposal systems, other than public sewers, in other words, that would best protect our water resource in that area. So, that remains the recommendation of the Wyoming licensed hydrogeologists who prepared those reports and transmitted to you with affirmation by the staff. The other note that I wanted to mention is that if this is approved by council tonight, your step is the last one in the process for the city. Our understanding is this will, this has already been to county planning and zoning for a recommendation. I haven't talked myself to the county planner, but our informal understanding is that was recommended for approval with some small modifications that didn't affect the, or didn't overlap with the city's conditions or city's process. That should go on to, in the normal course, to the county commissioners on May 3rd, so they will be the last step in the plat approval process. That is a quick overview of the plat. I'll be glad to answer any questions or otherwise help if I can.
Counselor Henry?
I have one question about the letter from the road district. And the last bullet that they have is that Burner Mill Road is adjacent to the east side of Lot 8. The plat easement for Burner Mill Road is suggested to be shown on the preliminary plat. And I couldn't tell if it is shown or not. It just says, "See note above," and to me, it doesn't, it doesn't, it doesn't make sense.
That's a good question, Counselor. Thank you. The letter, as you know from the date there, was written prior to the preliminary plat, so if, you may or may not remember, we got a sort of late breaking or last minute submittal in August of the preliminary plat with some changes. You may or may not remember, some of the lot shapes and sizes were a little different in the early version that was sent to you all in July, or in August. The final version of the preliminary plat that you saw in September, and then again in January, and this final plat do show Burner Mill Road properly.
It does, true, okay.
It's on the far right-hand or far east end of Lot 8, which is the furthest east of the lots. It's the, the broad wide shape there. So, we are in compliance.
Okay. I have another question. So, you said something just now about if the enhanced septic system, the septic tanks, if that would be required for replacement septic systems? So, you're talking in the future on those eight lots, correct?
Correct.
So, what if this land is purchased again and further subdivided?
If that happens, then provided state statute and local codes do not change in the meantime, that new plat would come before you all, as well as planning commission, and as well as the county, for your approval. So, you would have another shot at any proposed alternative wastewater systems at that time. In other words, as long as this plat is the recorded plat, we've got eight lots, no further subdivision of them, then the conditions as you see them here would apply. If another subdivision were to done, you know, over the top of this plat, new lots, additional lots, that sort of thing, you all would, if law doesn't change in the meantime, have review authority and approval authority over that. So, we would see any conditions and have a fresh look at them at that time.
Thank you, Counselor.
Mr. Mayor, if I, I'm sorry.
Did I interrupt?
I did. My apologies. I did forget to mention one of the conditions, and it's a rather important one. Just briefly, the condition from January had, that had to do with county firefighting water supply regulations we have also had satisfied. You have a letter in your packet from the Albany County Fire District Number One addressing that matter. I did want to point out that we'll have a future discussion in a bigger picture way on the city and rural fire district arrangements for firefighting arrangements in the county. This plat, meanwhile, though, has had that condition satisfied. There is a city fire hydrant at the far south end of Imperial Heights neighborhood that's reasonably close, a little over 1,000 feet from the edge of the subdivision. And per discussion with the county fire district, our firefighting, our fire department, our fire chief, we are satisfied that that's been dealt with properly as well. My apologies, I'll, it's not good.
Thank you. Counselor Hanson?
Thank you, Your Honor. I presume they do have wells for these eight lots as well?
They will have wells.
Wells, yeah. Of course, if history serves me right, we've seen this whole thing before, and we've gone through iteration after iteration on this. I still observe that this is fairly close to our pumping station on Grand Avenue. And I didn't like it then, and I don't like it now, but I think we were over a barrel, and with, threatened with litigation and whatnot, and taking, et cetera. And I will vote for it, noticing at least that, you know, we will have advanced or enhanced septic systems if it ever gets developed. And God be with us on this one. Thank you.
Thank you. Other comments from council? Counselor Henry?
Well, I, my comment is that I will vote no, based on the fact that groundwater quality should be protected for City of Laramie residents, and septic systems can cause degradation to groundwater.
Same here.
Thank you. Counselor Vitale?
I yield to counsel, woman, Pierce, her name was up before mine.
So, are we, I, yeah. I have a question. Can I go back to the question?
Sure.
Stage of this? So, who defines enhanced, and how is it defined?
That's not a term of art in the legal or technical sense, but the state engineer's office has a definition. According to our water resource specialists, there are specific systems that the state engineer's office will approve along those lines. I think the key operative, operative thing here is that the state engineer's office is tasked with reviewing and approving those systems.
And they know the, they've defined enhanced?
That's my understanding, yes.
Thank you. I have comments, too.
If you'd like, go right ahead.
So, just by coincidence, I ended up at the county zoning and planning commission meeting last week. And so, I'd like to share, if I could, a little bit of what I learned, because this was on their agenda. The folks over at the county zoning and planning commission, I hope I have the correct name, have done away with the beautification aspect of this development. Now, that's not to say that the county commissioners won't add it in, but at this particular stage, the zoning and planning folks have done away with that particular aspect of this. There was also some, I would say some general upset related to the folks over at Sherman Hills and the easement or access related to one of the roads over there, or the road district. And I didn't really understand it, but I just know that there's folks, their neighbors are basically upset with this. So, and I don't believe that the folks actually living downstream, which would be on the other side of Grand, were actually notified of this development, but I'm not 100% sure on that either. So, I just thought I'd throw that out there for folks to be aware of.
Thank you. Counselor Vitale?
Hey, Mayor. I have a number of documents here, but for the sake of time, I'm only going to read them by title. And the contents of all of these would be the reason why I will not support this with all the conditions, because those conditions are, I think, one of the main reasons we're being sued. But anyway, June 18th, 2015, there was a letter from a senior planner, Charles Bloom, and I would have to assume I had the authority of the city manager. And that letter basically implies forced annexation and extraterritorial services. And I won't read, can't read them to you, but, and then it was a response from the county on July 1, 2015, which basically disputes the city's authority on the conditions that were imposed. And then the county planning, the city planning, and the county commissioners all approved the preliminary plat without any conditions. And then it came to the city, and the city approved it with all the conditions. And then that triggered the Mountain West, which was a complaint for declaratory judgment and inverse condemnation. And that was then followed January 28th, 2016, with an amended complaint for partial taking and litigation. Then there's a letter here from the Wyoming Association of Risk Management that specifically says they will not cover this lawsuit. DEQ also has a letter here with recommendations, September 4th, 2015, and as required by Wyoming Statute 185306C, regard to septic systems and water systems, and who has the authority to grant the permitting of them and the inspection on them, of which the city really has no authority on either one of them. Then, Chapter 3 of the zoning on May 13th, 2015, went to the county planning and zoning commission. And then the July 8th, 2015, there was a staff report on the Mountain West application to the county planning office, from the county planning office. And then on, there's also a delegation agreement, that is between the Department of Environmental Quality and the county commissioners, which is Wyoming Statute 3511304, and that delineates the lines of authority and responsibilities. Then you have the annexation statute, 15-1401 to 415. You have the master plan statute, 15-1501 to 512. You have the subdivision laws, 34-12-103. And then there's some miscellaneous communications also attached to this. There's one other thing that's associated with this and other projects in the area. The attorney for the Mountain West also is an attorney for the school district, LEDC, Spradley Bar, and also owner of one of the lots here. Now, there is an appearance of a conflict of interest, but there's never been any public statement to clarify the conflict. I do know, and I have a copy of the conflict of interest law, and it does state that an attorney can represent two clients on the same issue, as long as certain conditions are met. And I just think, for the sake of public appearance, it's not against the law to have a conflict, but, you know, the conflicts, I think, should be declared, and that's one of the things that's asked before we start our meeting, if any of us have a conflict on anything. So, that would go a long way, I think, for a public relations thing. So, these are all the documents that I've read the titles to, and these are further documents that I have also that substantiates why we should not be approving this plat with all these conditions. If the owner of that property gets the plat approved, then if they want to set up covenants and establish conditions for the development, I think that should be on the owner, not on a governmental agency. a governmental agency that, whose questions of jurisdiction apparently is being questioned in lawsuit. That's all I have to say, Mayor.
Thank you. Any other comments from counsel? Oh, Counsel Weaver, thank you.
How many other speakers are on the speaking list?
I think you're.
Myself and Counsel Somerville. All right, well.
Oh, change of mind.
Okay. I feel like I'm in the time machine, Mr. Mayor. We're rehashing this issue. Some of the discussion hasn't even been relevant to the approval of the document before us. And if I was in a grouchier mood, I'd call for the question, but I don't want to sit through two votes. Let's not rehash the issue. We've burned up a lot of oxygen on this topic. Let's vote. Thank you.
Thank you. Counselor Shumway.
I'll be real brief. Mountain West Estate subdivision did have options that did not include septic systems. We were very generous in, as far as the city going to the table saying, we will extend water and sewer to you. That option was not chosen by them. I think the only position that I can take now is to approve this subdivision for the reason that we obviously will not prevail in any other decision.
Thank you. Counsel Somerville.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Squarly on to the point to the discussion tonight. You know, from the preliminary plat, we had discussed that their fire protection would be from a sister and as it's required. And I, I'm a little bit confounded at the issue that 1,000 feet is not too far to go for a fire hydrant, but 1,000 feet is too far to go for water and sewer. So the irony is not lost on me for that particular thing. And I don't think that it should be able to go both ways, to be honest. So I will leave it at that. Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Their expression about drinking out of a fire hose.
And I'm not a comic because I just want to get it done and call.
Let me go to city manager.
Mayor and counsel, I just wanted to state for the record that the reference made to the city manager endorsing some letter from staff that apparently included forced annexation is an improper reference. There are 278 staff members at this city. I certainly do not personally sign off on every piece of correspondence that goes out from those 278 people, nor have I ever supported any forced annexation. And frankly, in the history of the city, we've not been able to unveil any forced annexation by the City of Laramie in its 100-plus year history. Thanks.
Thank you. I had a question for the city attorney. It was referenced that the attorneys representing Mountain West are concerned about the conditions. And that would be the grounds for, part of the grounds for this suit. Could you comment on that?
Mayor and counsel, I'm not sure I follow the conditions.
Well, is that one of the concerns of the attorneys for Mountain West is the conditions we are applying to this subdivision?
Mayor and counsel, no, they've agreed to the conditions.
The attorneys have and Mountain West has?
Correct.
Thank you.
Should have been a letter in our packet.
Counselor Vitale, if you'd please wait for me to recognize you. Thank you. Counselor Vitale.
Thank you, Mayor. Would have been nice to have that letter in our packet, but I do have, I find it somewhat disturbing that a staff person can send a letter to this nature. And I mean, it's public record if anybody can get a copy of it, and it does say they will annex to get to, but anyway, I think the fire hydrant is already in place, isn't it?
The hydrant itself is installed, yes.
Yeah, it's installed and inspected, which is a lot different than not having infrastructure in, which would cost them, what, a million bucks to run at 1,300 feet?
600,000.
Thank you. Any further question, any further comments from counsel? Would anyone in the public wish to comment on this? City clerk, would you do roll call, please?
Weaver.
Yes.
Vitale.
No.
Somerville.
No.
Schuster.
Yes.
Shumway.
Yes.
Henry.
No.
Hanson.
Yes.
Pierce.
Yes.
Polikas.
Yes.
That is six yeses and three nos, Your Honor.
That motion carries. And I think it's a good time to take a break.
Is it too late to add a comment? Sorry. You guys, things happen really fast and.
If you'd like to, please.
It's going to be quick. Honorable mayor, council members. Mr. Vitale had mentioned that, I think my wife, you implied that my wife had been working as an attorney for Mountain West Farm Bureau when you'd mentioned the conflict as a potential landowner out there. Is that, is that what you're implying?
She was the attorney for a number of, she was the attorney for you initially, but they hired a law firm to sue us.
Never was. She actually had came before the council and said specifically that she was not acting as an attorney. She's dealt with Mr. Polikas in meetings several times, never represented herself as an attorney, correct?
That's correct.
Well, she did at the planning commission reference that she was not representing, she was not there as an attorney.
Right.
Okay.
Just for clarification, I think it's important, again, I'm obviously at a little personal interest in this, but I don't want that confusion out there.
We voted on it.
Thank you.
I appreciate the comment.
Name, for the record, may I have a name?
My name is Matt Getz.
Thank you, Mr. Getz. All right, we're break. All right, item, our next item is item number 15. Counselor Shumway.
Schuster.
Somerville.
And Somerville.
Oh, Somerville, S U M M. I didn't write your whole name out. Somerville.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. This is the third and final reading. Of ordinance number 1939 for annexing approximately 93 acres of property located in unincorporated Albany County. I move to approve original ordinance number 1939 on third and final reading, annexing approximately 93 acres of property located in unincorporated Albany County, generally located on the northeast corner of I-80 and Curtis Street, based on findings of fact and conclusions of law and authorize the mayor and clerk to sign the ordinance.
Second.
You need more love in town.
Who should I pick, Klaus? For the second? It was a tie. Counselor Schuster. Motion, motion and a second by Counselor Schuster. Director Hunt.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, members of council. I have a very big stack of files here, but I'm not going to use that as an excuse to talk very long. We have been pretty familiar with this process for all three of the items, including this first one that, in the row that you've got before you. The annexation in this case is for 93 acres, the northeast quadrant of the Curtis and I-80 interchange. This is the area between Banner Road, Banner and Carroll and the interstate with Curtis as the southern boundary. The proposal is to annex that property, the purpose, although as always, I would caution you, the annexation, the zoning and so on, don't lock in a particular user or a particular plan. In this case, the annexation was initiated by and has the purpose of, as stated by the applicant, to allow for a truck center, travel center to be built on part of that property, the southern part. There are no remaining issues that I'm aware of to the annexation. This is within the city's urban growth area. The ability to provide services easily, including city water, city sewer, franchise utilities, and street access are all there. As you heard last week, the traffic signal, this was a point I don't think we mentioned at first reading, but it's, Mayor's repeating tonight, that the traffic signal at McHugh, Banner and Curtis will provide for the ability to access the property in question off of Carroll Street. Very important when you're talking about major 18-wheel truck traffic and a good bit of traffic in general for the new use. The remaining questions, I say, I don't believe we have any issues to address. If you have questions, I'll be glad to answer those. I should mention the staff and the planning commission both recommended approval, and that stands before you tonight. Be glad to answer questions.
Comments from counsel? Vice mayor.
You know, it's unfortunate that the folks from Love's aren't here, but I just want to say, welcome to the city.
Thank you.
We need more love in town.
We need more love in town, yeah.
Any other comments from counsel? Counselor Hanson.
Thank you, just a question. Since that came up tonight, is the letter of their requesting annexation in here anywhere? Or you have a letter or something like?
We have an application with the signature of the owner and the applicant.
Thank you.
That was, I believe, sent to you an email about three weeks ago.
Counselor Weaver.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I just say that these Love's locations that are across the state, you know, for those of us that drive on I-80, I've certainly stopped at them. And, you know, as far as they go, they're nice facilities, and I think they have a loyal customer base, so it'll be people stopping at a place that they know and that they trust and they like to do business with, and that's good for us. So I think it's a good project for the city. Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else? Would anyone in the public wish to comment? City clerk, would you do roll call, please?
Somerville.
Yes.
Schuster.
Yes.
Shumway.
Yes.
Henry.
Yes.
Hanson.
Yes.
Vitale.
Yes.
Weaver.
Yes.
Pierce.
Yes.
Polikas.
Yes.
That is nine yeses and zero nos, Your Honor.
That motion carries. Item number 16, Counselor Somerville.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I've moved to approve city council resolution 2016-23, certifying planning commission action amending the future land use map, map 3.2 of the 2007 Laramie comprehensive plan for the property described in the resolution, generally located on the northern portion of a property located on the northeast corner of Interstate 80 and Curtis Street for an area approximately 60 acres in size, by changing the future land use designation from agriculture category to auto-urban commercial category, based on findings of fact and conclusions of law and authorize the mayor and clerk to sign. Second.
Thank you. There's a motion and a second by Counselor Henry. Director Hunt.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, members of council. Same property, well, actually, it's only part of the property because some of it was already designated for commercial under the comprehensive plan. It's the northern part that was left as agricultural in our original comp plan. Other than that, however, the purpose for the change in the plan, the purpose for the change in designation to commercial, all the same arguments, all the same parameters that we've encountered with the annexation and will shortly encounter with the resuming. Any questions? Be glad to answer those.
Counselor Hanson.
Just one question. On this map, all that red area was originally zoned commercial. Is that correct?
Yes, that area was already commercial. It's that lighter shaded area to the north.
That will be added to it.
And that actually would correspond with the entire 93-acre property boundary in this case.
Both of them together are the 93.
And some additional area you see on the other side of Curtis.
Thank you.
Already there.
Are there any comments from counsel? Would anyone, would anyone from the public wish to comment on this? City clerk, would you do roll call, please?
Hanson.
Yes.
Henry.
Yes.
Shumway.
Yes.
Schuster.
Yes.
Somerville.
Yes.
Vitale.
Yes.
Weaver.
Yes.
Pierce.
Yes.
Polikas.
Yes.
That is nine yeses and zero nos, Your Honor.
That motion carries. Item number 17, Counselor Somerville.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. This is the final piece for the potential Love's Travel Center project. I would move to approve original ordinance number 1940 on third and final reading, establishing zoning in an area approximately 93 acres in size to B2 business district, generally located on the northeast corner of I-80 and Curtis Street, based on findings of fact and conclusions of law and authorize the mayor and clerk to sign the ordinance.
Second.
Thank you. There's a motion and a second by Counselor Schuster. Director Hunt wants to.
What I just said, any questions? Same property, this will be commercial zoning. Be glad to answer any questions.
Are there any questions for Director Hunt? Would counsel, any comments from counsel? Yes, Counselor Somerville.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I'll make one really quick one, as somebody who lives over there and travels this section of road several times over, I think this would be a great improvement and a great project for not just the people that want to stop at Love's, but for the people that live and work in this area. I think it's going to be great. So I appreciate the interest in Laramie.
Thank you. Are there any comments from the public? City clerk, would you do roll call, please?
Vitale.
Yes.
Weaver.
Yes.
Somerville.
Yes.
Schuster.
Yes.
Shumway.
Yes.
Henry.
Yes.
Hanson.
Yes.
Pierce.
Yes.
Polikas.
Yes.
That is nine yeses and zero nos, Your Honor.
Thank you. That motion carries. Item number 18, Counselor Vitale.
I move that council accepts an MRG grant award from the state loan investment board in the amount of $125,000 for the construction of an additional bay at the Laramie Fire Station Number Two, authorize the mayor to sign.
Thank you. Is there a second?
The clerk have to sign that as well?
Yes.
And the clerk to sign.
Thank you.
Yes, second.
Second by Counselor Schuster. Chief Johnson.
Honorable mayor, members of council, a little history background on this item before you. We started receiving approximately, eight to 10 years ago, we started receiving estimates on what it would cost to expand our bay at Station Two, realizing we needed to do that. The costs have gone up over the last decade. We have always sought to find some grant funding opportunities to help us to build the bay. So last fall, we hit the priority where we were able to put in for state land loan investment board grant through the mental roll of the grant program. We put in for a $250,000 project based on the estimates that we received, and we put in for 75% funding on the project. We were awarded in January a 50-50 split, 50% of the $250,000 that we requested. So we were awarded $125,000. And for you tonight would be the council accepting that award if you choose to. The city's match on the grant obligation is $125,000. We came in close on our next item, you'll see that. But anyway, if you have any questions for me.
Questions, Counselor Hanson.
Thank you, Your Honor. You yellow highlighted something that refers to Attachment A, and Attachment A says it's your responsibility, or whoseever, our responsibility, to secure all pending match funding. So in other words, when we are accepting the $125,000 grant, we are committing ourselves from the general fund to $125,000. Is that correct?
Honorable mayor, Counselor Hanson, yes, that would be correct.
We're all aware of that, right? In our fiscal situation, unfortunately.
Okay. Thank you. City manager.
Mayor and counsel, a portion of this funding is already approved in your current year's budget.
Yeah. It would be a carryover. Any other questions or comments from counsel? Counselor Somerville.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. This is just a quick comment. I think when trying to consider whether this is a good idea or a good fit for our budget year, we've seen over the last, especially the last year and maybe a little bit before that, that the slipboard has really gone to a 50-50 grant process for the emergency services, whether it's fire trucks or ambulances or bay additions or whatever, they just, and it seems to be pretty consistent across the communities that have applied. So I don't think that by waiting, we might get a better grant match out of the slipboard. I think that's just an important point to consider when looking at this. Thank you.
Thank you. And I'll add to it, too. Another consideration for this bay is the fact that we've, last year I think it was, we purchased a Quint fire truck, which is an advanced, I'm not, I'm not the expert on this, but it's a sophisticated fire truck that I believe is approaching a million dollars. And we need a bay to put that truck in to protect our investment, and this bay will serve that function. So it's, it's of very good value considering what's going to be in it. Yes, Counselor Weaver.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. And this may have already been alluded to in the conversation, but I think the need for both that piece of equipment and this facility that houses it were identified in our, in our safety study. And was it the year before last or last year?
Yes. Honorable mayor, Councilman Weaver, yes, we, one of the things that's happened in our overall response model is we've districted our ambulances, and we have ambulances at all three stations now. So when we put an ambulance out there. all three stations now. So when we put an ambulance out there, it, it needs space. We keep it inside. We keep the Class A pumper inside. The Class A pumpers, when that station was built, have, due to NFPA regulations, they keep getting bigger. They're a lot bigger than they used to be when that station was first built. There's hardly, it's very difficult to even walk around the engines. There's not much room. So the additional bay will give us the space that we need. Also allows to house an ambulance and a wildland engine inside, and also free up some space for workspace for our equipment operators are trying to do maintenance and stuff.
Appreciate the background. Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you. Counselor Hanson.
Thank you. It is the second ladder truck, too, right, to back up our only ladder that we have. It doesn't go quite as high as the other one?
No, it doesn't. It's, a Quint is also, it's basically a pumper that has a ladder on it, an aerial capability.
So how high does it go?
Geez. 68 feet.
68 feet?
I was thinking 70, but it's 68.
And our current one goes?
95.
95, okay, thank you.
Thank you. Anything else from council? Anyone from the public? City Clerk, would you do roll call, please?
Vitale.
Yes.
Weaver.
Yes.
Somerville.
Yes.
Schuster.
Yes.
Shumway.
Yes.
Henry.
Yes.
Hanson.
Yes.
Pierce.
Yes.
Polikas.
Yes.
That is nine yeses and zero nos, Your Honor.
That motion, that motion carries. Item number 19, Counselor Vitale.
I move that council authorize the city of Laramie to award a bid to Spiegelberg Lumber and Building in the amount of $251,539 with a contingency fund of 7.5%, which is $18,865, for the purpose of construction of an additional bay at the Laramie Fire Department Station Number Two, and amend the fiscal year 1516 budget.
Second.
Thank you. There's a motion and a second by Counselor Somerville. Chief Johnson.
Honorable Mayor, members of council, this is the same item again. This, we went out to, we wanted to get an early start to the construction season to get on, if the grant was awarded and the council accepted it, we wanted to be ready with the bid. We delayed bringing the grant award before you to get as much handle on the budget implications as we could. We wanted to get the early bid numbers to you, so it's showing up to you on the same night. We did go to bid. We received five bids, all from Wyoming, qualified Wyoming contractors. We feel that the bid of Spiegelberg Lumber and Building was the low bid, and we feel they're qualified to do a project of this scope. That being said, the architect that did our plan recommends a contingency also of seven, between 5 and 10%. So I just picked 7.5% right in the middle of what they recommended. The bid did come in, $1,539 over the, would be over the $250,000 project that we had estimated. That with the contingency recommendation would put our request in at $20,404, added to the $250,000 for a total proposed budget project cost of $274,400. If you have any questions?
Questions? Comments from council? I'll make one comment. I actually worked on that building back in early 80s as a young carpenter. I don't think that building cost $250,000 to build at that time, so.
Which only proves that you aged.
Anyway, that's true. Any, anything else from council? Public? City Clerk, would you do roll call, please?
Weaver.
Yes.
Vitale.
Yes.
Somerville.
Yes.
Hanson.
Yes.
Henry.
Yes.
Shumway.
Yes.
Schuster.
Yes.
Pierce.
Yes.
Polikas.
Yes.
That's nine yeses and zero nos, Your Honor.
That motion carries. Item number 20, Counselor Schuster.
Well, we talked about this one before the meeting, so I'm going to take a swing at introducing it. I wish to bring on the floor for discussion the original ordinance number 1930.
Thank you. Is there a second?
Second.
Second by Counselor Shumway. We'll go directly to the vote for that. So City Clerk, would you do roll call, please?
Hanson.
Yes.
Henry.
Yes.
Shumway.
Yes.
Schuster.
Yes.
Somerville.
Yes.
Vitale.
Yes.
Weaver.
Yes.
Pierce.
Yes.
Polikas.
Yes.
That is nine yeses and zero nos, Your Honor.
Thank you. We're open for discussion, and I'll turn it over to Assistant City Manager, Mr. Deragon.
Honorable Mayor and council, before you is a discussion on the third reading of the cable TV franchise ordinance. I've lost count of how many times we've had this discussion. However, at our last discussion, we were looking at having an annual review between the city and charter. Initially, it was discussed that for the first three years of the franchise agreement, we had discussed having it every year of the franchise agreement, regardless of the length of the agreement. Charter has proposed a couple different options. One of their options is a 10-year term with an annual meeting every year. We've had kind of similar proposals, and I think based on our last meeting, the 10-year term and a meeting every year is kind of consistent with where we were headed. Toward the end of that meeting, we discussed some customer service standards, and I think that's where you need to open the discussion. So, or if you want to open that discussion. So first, I think if you want to put a motion on the floor to accept or to approve the third reading of the ordinance, and then amend in whatever language you would want, if that's Charter's option number two, or if it's one of our options. The only thing we've changed in any other readings of this ordinance is the franchise term, and we reduced it from 10 years to five. That's the only change we've made. So we can have the discussion and decide what language you want this evening.
Thank you.
I had told the city attorney we would be done tonight by 8:45.
How much money?
No money changed hands on this deal.
And I think it would be helpful if you'd reference the option that you prefer in this discussion.
There's really, I don't know that it's up to me to make a recommendation. I would say that the Charter option number two, 10-year term and an annual meeting every year of those 10 years, is kind of where we left it at the last time and what people wanted. I think a 10-year term is good for the city, and I think a 10-year term is good for Charter from the standpoint of capital investment. Where we kind of trailed off in the last meeting was customer service standards, and I think the city attorney addressed that earlier of whether the enforceability of that lays within our expertise, and that's the discussion that the council should have.
Okay.
If I was to recommend to you, which I'm not sure is where I should be, but I would do Charter option two, 10-year term, annual meeting every year, and then you can decide on customer service standards.
Thank you. All right. Who'd like to start?
Since I introduce you, would you like me?
Please do.
I recommend to council that on original ordinance 1930, we go with option two with a 10-year agreement with an annual meeting of review every year.
Thank you. Is there a second on that?
Second.
Second by Counselor Hanson.
Now we can discuss.
Discuss. And I would say this, too. I don't, I think it's appropriate. If you want to vary from that to the other options, that would be fine also, because they're all related, if you will, in some way. Counselor Vitale?
Yeah, weren't we told beginning that they would not agree to annuals for 10 years?
Oh, I'm sorry, okay.
Mayor, Counselor Vitale, no, they wouldn't agree to the city's proposed option two. The language that they would not agree to was, "In the event that amicable resolution of identified services issues is not achieved, grantor reserves right to implement customer service standards applicable to and enforceable on the grantee." That's the sentence that they would not agree to. They would, the 10 years was something they would agree to.
An annual review for 10 years, I would agree to?
I believe so. That's in their language.
And I'll give them an opportunity to come up to after we've had a discussion.
Well, I'd just like to finish my comment.
Please do.
You know, and I've talked to quite a few people in this community, and there's still some folks disgruntled about some interruptions we're having. I know in the last five weeks, I don't think we've had more than five minutes of interruption. That has improved, and I don't know what they've done, if they've done anything. But I, I guess I'm finding it very difficult to sit here and try and micromanage a business. Quite frankly, I think, and I know the city does it in many instances with our Unified Development Code. We put an awful lot of restrictions on people trying to get into business and stay in business. But I've always been of the belief that the market will drive the business. Now, their business is they provide a product and a service. And anybody that has been in business that provide a product and a service knows that if either one of those two are deficient, you lose customers. And once you lose enough customers, you no longer are in business. I don't think a business in this town needs a mayor and council, especially which the greatest percent of them have never run a business, to try and tell somebody how to run their business. I think they know the market, they know the standard, they know what they need to do. I think they're quite aware right now of the problems that exist in this community. I have to believe that they are consciously out there trying to fix everything they can fix, and they would like to grow their business and provide other services. And it may be some of the problems are because before it used to be a basic cable. Now you have internet, Wi-Fi, telephones, and who knows what else is going into them lines. And I don't know if them lines are like a water line, where water going through a two-inch line, if you start adding more than what it can handle, you know, it breaks. I don't know about fiber optics and these cables and to what capacity they can handle all this new equipment, but that's what they're in the business to do. So I, I would, I would like to amend that every year, the first three years after the effective date of the franchise, because after that, if these folks aren't improving their level of service, taking care of their customers, you know, the, they won't need a city council to take care of the problem. The public will take care of the problem, like they do other businesses. So I, I will, you know, vote for it, but if they agree to 10-year annual review, then, you know, I guess I'd vote for that, too. But I'd vote for the 10-year contract at this point.
Thank you. Counselor Pierce.
So I just, my, my comment is really procedural. So we opened this up, we opened this topic up with a motion to discuss, then we didn't discuss, and then we immediately went into a motion, and now we're talking about potentially amending parts of the motion. So I'm curious, I'm curious if we're okay procedurally, if we just keep talking, or if we need to go back to the discussion or what we're doing.
I think that's a good point. City Attorney, could you help me out with that?
Sure. Mayor, Vice Mayor, right now I think you have two amendments.
Right.
No, we do not have an amendment on the floor.
Ow.
And we don't have a motion.
Yes, we do.
We have a motion on the floor.
Yes, we do. I made a motion.
We do have a motion on the floor, but we do not have amendment on the floor, because frankly, I was confused as to where the amendment was.
We had to bring the motion to discuss.
There is a motion on the floor to discuss.
And then we had to bring an option to actually consider, I think.
No.
No. Would you repeat the motion that's on the floor, City Clerk?
The motion is to go with option number two with a 10-year term and an annual review.
Thank you. And that was seconded by Counselor Vitale, I believe.
Yes. No, Klaus Hanson, sir.
Oh, Klaus, okay. There you go. All right. So that's what's on the floor right now.
And that's what we were discussing.
Yes, yes. But the point was made by this, we kind of made a motion to discuss, and then we put an amendment, then we put a motion on the floor. So that's what the point of the, not to take words out of her mouth.
And Mayor, the, the motion would supersede that, so that, right now you're discussing the motion.
That's fine. I just want to make sure we're not.
And I believe Counselor Vitale made an amendment to that motion, but it-
Well, he did, but then he kept moving on, and I didn't know whether it was just a suggestion that sometime down the road he'd like to make an amendment. So that's where I'm at right now.
That's why I said I would approve that, but I did make a motion.
That's the way I read it, too.
All right.
Your Honor, aren't we just discussing an amendment to the motion?
No.
There's comments about the option.
We are, frankly, you can discuss any option you want, because, but right now, on the floor is to approve option number two without amendments.
And we're talking about Charter's option number two.
Correct.
Thank you. Counselor Somerville.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Without calling the question, I would recommend that maybe the best way to deal with this is to, we've kind of hammered the discussion on annual reviews and everything else to death, to vote this particular 10-year and option two up or down, and then we could discuss customer service options, if that's the way we want to go, instead of, so we can clean this up.
I would just like to give every council that would like to speak to it, speak to it, and then we can go quickly to it. So is there any other councils that want to speak to option number two? I'm also going to give Charter an opportunity. Counselor Shumway.
I like option two. As I read it, I think we're, there's a misconception that's going out, and that is that we are going to have an annual review. The way I read it, it says the grantee agrees that the grantor may have an annual, on an annual basis, have this discussion. If everything's going great, we're not going to have a meeting, we're not going to have a discussion. If it's not going great, we don't exercise that option. I, I like this because obviously, we're not, all we're doing is getting together and saying, we want you to know what we're hearing, because, you know, sometimes our eyes and ears hear things differently than they do. But I think that's just a courtesy to them to say, here's, here's the concerns, here's the things that you need to be aware of so that you can, you know, make sure that you're delivering the very best service you can to the city of Laramie. My guess is, we'll pass this, and we probably won't have another meeting for 10 years until we renew the franchise agreement.
Thank you. Other councillors? Counselor Henry?
Well, I have a question, but it's not on the option, but it is on the agreement.
Please do.
And that is in Section 8.5 about restoration of public ways. It's on page seven. I've had, I've heard from constituents that sometimes the alleys are not put back to where they're so, and there's no timeline in this. There's no, there's no timeframe in Section 8.5. It just says that they shall restore any damage at their own expense, but it doesn't say when. And, and then that's a complaint that I received about some of the alleys are still torn up. And I can't remember what part, what part of town it was. I'm sorry. I didn't get it in writing.
Honorable Mayor and Counselor Henry, I think that, I know that's a problem. I'm not sure it's always affiliated with the cable company. I've heard those complaints with the gas company, and I've heard those complaints with some of our other utilities, and I think we're working to address those. some of our other utilities, and I think we're working to address those. I know specifically a place is with the gas company. And part of this comes into the timing of when you can make those repairs. And so, but I think that through Public Works, we've been working on those issues and being more timely in getting them resolved.
Okay. All right. Thank you.
Any other councillors wish to comment? Counselor Hanson.
Just a question. In 1510, the effective date, section 1510 on page 14, we would have to then change that back to '25, right? Twenty, '25, right? Yeah, okay.
We'll change what's appropriate based on the term you approved tonight.
What we approved.
But I didn't change anything else in here until we do this, and then I'll make the appropriate corrections.
And then, another question. You have a statement, God, where is this thing? At the beginning there somewhere? Oh, yeah. 3.2, it simply says annual review. That's where the change would be planned to go in, right?
Honorable Mayor, Counselor Hanson, that's correct.
Correct. Thank you.
Thank you. Why don't at this time I offer the podium, the Charter, if they'd like to give us any Mr. Rasmussen.
Good evening, Mayor, Council. I'm Eric Rasmussen with Charter. I also have with me our area Vice President, Chris Fulton. We have been here a couple times. When we first initiated the renewal process, we had service outages. And with that, the city wanted a mechanism to ensure that dialogue between Charter and the city occurred to address those issues. We, Charter presented a letter to the city that said, "We would meet with you upon request." City Council at that point wanted something that bound Charter, brought them in and inside the franchise agreement. That's where they wanted to see that item. We didn't do that. Then you took a vote, it was nine-zero, to not renew the franchise agreement. So we heard you loud and clear. We presented two options, one a three-year option and one a ten-year option, which we're happy to go with the ten-year term, and we're happy to meet with you upon request, as Counselor Shumway said, upon request, when there's an issue. One of the other items, we believed all along, inside of section 14, you had a mechanism to bring us back in to talk with us, and the council, you know, paraphrasing, said it wanted something that wasn't maybe as onerous to bring us in, it wanted to have an amicable relationship with us moving forward. We've seen that, we've presented an option, and we'd ask the council to favorably consider and approve that option number two presented by Charter.
Any questions for Mr. Rasmussen? Thank you.
Thank you, Mayor.
I would suggest we go to a vote on this option. I think everybody's had an opportunity to speak.
Dave, you want to vote?
No, I'm good.
So let's go. So are you clear, all clear what we're voting on?
Just on whether to incorporate option two into the agreement.
Correct. City Clerk, would you do roll call, please?
Hanson.
Yes.
Henry.
No.
Shumway.
Yes.
Vitale.
Yes.
Weaver.
Yes.
Schuster.
Yes.
Somerville.
Yes.
Pierce.
Yes.
Polikas.
Yes.
That is eight yeses and one no, Your Honor.
That motion carries. That item is completed, I believe.
No, they have to do.
It's about the overall agreement.
Oh, the agreement. Okay.
Honorable Mayor, I believe that Mr. Schuster's motion put that on the floor with that change. I think we're done.
I thought we were done.
I think we're done.
It's good enough.
We're done.
That's the way I've seen it.
Ten years from now.
Watch the champagne, someone.
Ten years from now, somebody else can deal with it.
It's been a pleasure. I look forward to seeing you in ten years.
Wonderful. All right.
Coming from the grave.
Item 21, Counselor Weaver.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I'm unprepared. Give me just a moment.
That's all right. I understand.
Your Honor, I move to approve Resolution 201632, adopting city goals for 2016 and 2017, and authorize the mayor and clerk to sign.
Second.
Thank you. There's a motion and a second by Counselor Somerville. City staff, city manager.
Mayor and Council, as noted in the cover sheet, the council goals were worked up at the retreat of council, January 22nd, 23rd. I've brought the original brainstorming sheet with me if we need to reference it. Subsequently, I also offered council an opportunity to come and visit with staff regarding ideas for implementing these various goals, and consequently, we're here tonight to formally adopt them. I've moved them into the resolution verbatim from what was on your worksheets from the council retreat. There was concern about the title headings, so in lieu of title headings, I just identified them by a letter so that we would have a reference point. And if you have any questions, I'm happy to answer them. If we need to pull out the reference material, we can.
Thank you.
That's the list through A through T, right?
You're correct, yes.
I'll go to Counselor Weaver because he introduced it.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Just briefly, the concern about the numbering was that it might imply some sort of rank ordering as opposed to just the goals being considered as a whole series, a whole project for the council and staff over the two years. Was that generally?
I believe so. And it's for that reason, Counselor Weaver, I use letters.
Right.
But it didn't look like it was number one, two, three.
Right. Because we can't just have, they have to have some sort of order to them. Okay. I appreciate that. And you just, you know, reviewing them again, Mr. Mayor, I think they're well in line with our fiscal reality and also with our priorities as a group. I remember that was a very productive retreat and work session. So, thank you very much.
Thank you. Counselor Schuster.
I feel a lot the exact same way, because fiscally is what is going to be the toughest thing. A lot of this is going to be cooperation from everybody out there. So we'll have to see how far we can get done on this list, and I've seen these council goals several times, and we get as far as we can, and then next year, we're going to have another retreat and new council goals, and they will shift slightly, but a lot of the goals will stay, and we will work towards it.
Thank you. I have just one comment or one concern. When I read over several of these, but the one that sticks with me is basically developing a new comprehensive plan, or updating our comprehensive plan, and what concerns me is not that it doesn't need to be done, and that it's not time to be done. What concerns me is if we're going to have the appropriate staff to be able to do it, or if this isn't just reaching, because the last time we did a comprehensive plan, it was all-inclusive, and it was basically the year's project. It's a huge project to do. And I, if you approach it from an ideal situation where, you know, in a perfect world, we can get her done, I can accept that. If it's a goal that we want to get it done in the next two years, given our fiscal situation, I'm reluctant to support it. Yes.
Are you talking about D?
I am talking about the comprehensive plan D. Within two years, complete an evaluation and report and update the comprehensive plan.
I don't think it means completely redo the comprehensive plan. I thought it meant just look at the updates that are required. It's a living document. The comprehensive plan is a living document. And I thought, I thought that's what we meant, is not redo the entire comprehensive plan, but just look at what needs to be updated, which is what we're supposed to be doing anyway.
Okay. Counselor Weaver.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. So on this topic, then I guess I would ask the city manager if, in her view, the process of the update is realistic, given some of the concerns that the mayor brought up. I mean, that's really what, that's really what our question is going to be. Update, to me, doesn't imply a revision.
Right.
But maybe look at the glaring areas, but I don't know. I mean, that's, that's language. So, Mr. Mayor, my question is, what does staff think about that?
City manager.
Mayor and Council, the, not the UDC, the comprehensive plan noted that it should periodically, I believe it was on a roughly five-year cycle, be updated. That doesn't mean we start from scratch. That means we work from the document that we have, and we incorporate any new studies or elements, and we also update and refresh the community's perspective within the comprehensive plan. So to your question of is it realistic to accomplish in two years, I think it's certainly more realistic to accomplish that in two years than it would be if it were a one-year goal. I don't foresee, right now we have three planning FTEs. I foresee, at least through this biennium, we continue to have three planning FTEs. But to be candid, you know, we're gearing up for a difficult budget biennium. There is concern that this first year of the biennium, starting July 1, could in fact be one of the better years. And that if we're experiencing, you know, a sustained period of downward trend in revenue statewide, that we could see deeper cuts in the second year of this biennium or in next biennium. So I guess where I'm going with that is I would urge that council be flexible. I think staff will do everything we can to get this update accomplished in two years. We're a few years overdue right now because we postponed the update based on completing the housing study, which would be an element of the comp plan, upload it into an updated version, and some other studies I won't go into. But I think it's feasible, we could accomplish this in two years, barring any further budget reductions that might negatively impact our staffing levels.
Thank you. Further comments? Counselor Hanson.
Thank you, Your Honor. Item C, prepare and present for council consideration a neighborhood services program concept. I don't remember that one. Can you give me, what do we want to do there?
I'm not sure. City manager.
I'm sorry. I didn't realize you were talking to me. I apologize. The neighborhood services program concept, we've discussed the last couple of years. It's modeled after what you see in other communities. Probably the closest nearby community that has a program of this sort is Fort Collins. Focuses on discrete neighborhoods and helping those neighborhoods to kind of organize and identify what improvements they would like to see in their neighborhoods, whether those are hard and fast improvements, infrastructure-wise, beautification-wise, parkland-wise. They're almost, I guess I would say, a lot of times, these neighborhood services programs actually help a neighborhood to kind of define itself and almost establish like a mini plan for the neighborhood, and help them vision for the future. And then the city becomes a partner in sort of facilitating that creation of those distinct neighborhoods.
Would that go with, you remember in our comprehensive plan, we have so-and-so many sections on parks, I think, 12, 14? I can't remember. Sort of similar structure to that? How do you define neighborhood here? That's, I guess that's my, because it can't be ward. Ward is too big, I would assume.
That is correct. Part of the, part of the exercise is defining those neighborhoods within your community.
To define that?
Yes, yes.
All right.
You know, and we sort of anecdotally refer to neighborhoods already in our community, right? The West Side neighborhood, the Tree Area neighborhood. So part of the first step in that process is defining, you know, allowing the community to define those neighborhoods, and what makes them distinct, and what characteristics they have, and what, you know, characteristics they might want to further, I guess.
Thank you. I just didn't know where that came from. I didn't remember.
Thank you. Counselor Weaver.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Just, just quick, and the city manager already did a pretty good job of summarizing that. Most of the time, 99% of the time, we approach our issues from the city of Laramie as a whole, and that's appropriate. Sometimes, though, I think we all recognize, and I've heard every one of us do this around the table, individual challenges for specific areas in the city. And I think what this program is going to try to do, or at least hopes to do in the years to come, is rather than try to do overlay districts and things like that that we've taken a look at, I think in the past, and decided weren't appropriate, maybe to try a different approach at that, but still with that individualized touch, you know, West Laramie, the West Side, the Tree Area, each of these have, you know, certain problems that may, maybe aren't features of other neighborhoods. In the past, we've talked about some of the drainage issues in the Indian Hills neighborhood al d'vis, and they have unique challenges, and I think the idea behind the program is to help begin a process of identifying those challenges, and also maybe strengths and positive attributes that are unique to those areas, and try to maybe tailor policy a little bit better. That's the hope, anyway. We'll see what comes of it. Thanks.
Thank you. Vice Mayor.
Are we going to stay on this topic, or can I make a comment on N and O?
Oh, any of them.
We're okay with that. So I have two comments on N. I don't, and this is just kind of nitpicky, but I don't think everything needs to be capitalized. Not the word "everything," but paving, section, criteria, currently unimproved streets, you know, just a, I'm surprised Klaus didn't notice it, or Counselor Henry.
I was going to capitalize "in" and "the."
You were going to capitalize, okay. And then my other comment is related to O. I guess I'd just like to see that list kind of continue, so maybe with an et cetera, as opposed to--
Just stopping.
As opposed to just listing a few, and maybe get rid of the word "agencies" and just put a plural after "partners."
Community partners, yeah.
Partners.
Would that be an amendment?
I think you'd have to make an amendment, because you're expanding it, in essence.
Right. I was just, I didn't want it to be, you know, just very select. I wanted all our partners to be included in that. Okay, so I will make a motion to, on letter O, delete the word "agencies," add "s" onto "partners," and add a comma, and et cetera, after Iverson Memorial Hospital.
Second.
Thank you. There's an amendment to the motion and a second by Counselor Henry, speaking to the amendment. Would anyone wish to speak to the amendment? Counselor Henry?
I think that's a good idea, because those are not our only partners. There are many partners that could be included.
Well, okay. Other comments? Counselor Weaver.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I'll probably support this amendment, but I want to point out a couple of things about it. I think, in the first place, the city recognizes that this is its, one of its missions, and that that's something we should always be doing, but I don't disagree with the spirit of the goal. On the other hand, if we've identified a need to strengthen relationships with these specific agencies, then maybe that's what we want to focus our time on it, as the goal. And even if that's not the case, if it's just, if we wanted to add some extra, you know, policymaking weight behind our overall mission of strengthening partnerships, and we need to start somewhere which speaks to the need to maybe keep the list finite. But that's just another point of view. Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Let me put my two cents in real quick, and then I'll go to you. Without regurgitating what Counselor Weaver said, I agree 100% with what he said, and I will not support it for those reasons. Vice Mayor.
So I couldn't, you know, and I had that thought, and I just couldn't remember at our retreat if we were being narrow or being broad. So I, I thought I'd throw it out there because--
Discussion.
Because I guess, I'm hoping we are being broad and not narrow.
Thank you. Anyone else on the amendment? City Clerk, would you do roll call on the amendment?
Hanson.
Yes.
Henry.
Yes.
Shumway.
No.
Schuster.
No.
Somerville.
Yes.
Vitale.
No.
Weaver.
Yes.
Pierce.
Yes.
Polikas. Polikas?
No.
That is five yeses and four no's, Your Honor.
So the amendment carries, and it's part of the main motion. So, back to the main motion. Further discussion on the main motion? Last chance. City Clerk, could you do roll call, please?
Weaver?
Yes.
Vitale?
No.
Somerville?
Yes.
Hanson?
Yes.
Shumway?
Yes.
Henry?
Yes.
Schuster?
Yes.
Pierce?
Yes.
Polikas?
Yes.
That's eight yeses and one no, Your Honor.
That motion carries. Our goals are adopted. Item number 22, consideration of future council work sessions. Do we have any? Vice Mayor?
I'm sorry, do we have the Monolith Ranch on the agenda yet?
I will get it there, but-
Okay.
We're a little behind the curve on tours because of the moisture.
Right, okay.
So, I'll probably bring it to you for sending it on to medium.
So-
Okay, thank you, sorry.
We will be doing a work session prior to bringing it before us for consideration.
Honorable Mayor and Council, what we will be doing is a joint work session with the council and the ranch committee, but we're going to try to do tours of the area for all of you prior to you having that work session.
Okay.
So it's a little bit weather-dependent, and then our goal would be to try and have a decision by late June, at the latest, earlier if we can, but we want you to visit the site, discuss it with the ranch committee, and certainly with Mountain Cement, but having a tour of what area will be affected on the ranch first. The ranch committee met last week, they've not made a recommendation, but they will make one to you subsequent to the work session and the tours being complete. So as soon as we can get those lined up, I'll get information out to all of you.
Sounds great.
Get a tour.
Thank you. Counselor Weaver?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I'd like to request a work session regarding urban renewal agencies, the state statutes governing them, and potentially implementation strategies that have been used in other cities.
Okay. Does that have any support from another councillor?
It does.
Counselor Henry?
And I just would quickly add to that, Mr. Mayor, it helps us get after council goals C and G.
Thank you. So that'll be our work session list. Anything else? Public comment on non-agenda items by sign-in? I don't believe we have any, since we don't, other than our League of Women Representatives, we don't have any. Counselor Hanson, item 24.
I move that council adjourned.
Second.
There's a second by Counselor Henry. All in favor of the motion signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Are there any opposed? We are adjourned.